See, I can't hear any of y'all. I don't understa-
Mars said Mayor Pro Tim Shaw is not here.
Yeah, that's what I said, the county board president, the county board, we know what she's uh, she's already called and said, appreciate that. Everybody's had a chance to look over the agenda, is there any comments, questions on it? Comments, questions on the agenda? About the minutes from our July twenty, July twenty first meetings, any comments or questions? Sidney, Mr. Griffin, no go here?
No, not either.
And visitor presentation, Mr. Wim Gill. When y'all fill these out, let me know something on the topic. It'd be good if I knew ahead of time because that would give me time to do some research and all like tonight we just listened, but you're already on the agenda for the other one.
Yeah. If you don't mind, I have a A, it's Ms. Moore, Ms. Yunus Moore, she is here.
So you wanna go through this, this and-
You wanna speak tomorrow night or tonight, Ms. Moore?
We tell them what we want you to do is all right.
So we're gonna go through this list and then this one?
Well, we got this for the presentation.
Sorry, I'm gonna show that.
Usually we do this one, then go into that one, we do that first. We do this one first. Okay, we do this one first. Ms. Yunus Moore, Darien Golagichi Committee.
Good evening, everybody, thank you for affording me this time. My concern is that my last visit here, that we were going to revise the Golagichi Cultural Court of Commission Committee. I wanna know if there's anything that I need to do or what should be done for that to happen, since you were going to advertise it.
Yes, ma'am, and that's what I went downstairs just here in Mexico to double check on it, we still advertise that meeting in the paper when we advertise the city council meeting.
People are joining.
Yes, ma'am, so what we need, I mean now it's up to the community if we get volunteers, you know, people to join it.
Okay, do you have that saying to join the committee?
Yes, ma'am, I mean it's an open, it's an open committee, if I'm correct.
You can put that committee in there, that's your appointment.
Yeah, that's what I said, so any of them wants to join it, just come get in touch with me and we'll put them on that board. I think, uh, Griffin's on the board, aren't you?
Uh, yes, we, me and the mayor, we started that, as soon as we wanted to chair now, and as the mayor said, it's, the committee has to get out there and recruit, that's what we did in the beginning.
But as far as the, happening this ban, do we still advertise them, we still have four thirty if they wanna show up, yeah, but nobody shows up.
Okay, I show up, I just don't come upstairs.
We did advertise a little more, word of mouth or whatever, and anybody who wants to join the, uh, that committee-
There's not anyone when I come, so I don't come to say, y'all, I'm here, y'all, I'm here.
Yes, ma'am.
And, uh, I do show up, but it's not anyone here.
But like I say, if we get the word out, ones that wanna join that committee, we were doing some good things, some great things on it, uh, then kind of went and joined one off, now we, we down to like two or three people and maybe there was, nobody showed up for meetings, so.
Okay, well, I-
That's still, it's still, it's still inactive, and hopefully we can get more people involved with it and build it back up and keep going.
Okay, because- The chair of that committee, if y'all want to know.
I stepped in, I stepped down, I left Ms. Moore do it.
Okay.
We stepped that one?
Yeah, we did that one, second meeting.
Yeah, we came to about four or five or seven meetings and the mayor and I's schedule was just way too heavy. And Ms. Yunus Moore took on the chair and there was a few other members that joined in, and like most meetings, it, it, it feathered down, but the mayor was there, I was there, and we just couldn't attend all the meetings.
Well, why?
So you're still the chair?
I suggest, I suggest that we advertise, that people can join.
Yes, ma'am, you're still the chair for it.
I know what I'm saying, advertising.
Yes, ma'am, we can handle that, we can do that now that.
Yeah, I don't wanna be the sole owner-
Yes, ma'am.
Of the committee.
We do that.
I don't mind supporting, but I don't wanna say, I want you, I want you, I want you, I don't wanna do that.
No, ma'am, no, ma'am, but I, I mean, it's just-
Because I, I have a concern about us not being the second owners.
Yes, ma'am.
Not having the potion of Bubba Island.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't have to have the whole table, I just want a potion.
Yes, ma'am, and that's what we're, what we're talking here, just so people know, is the, uh, Darien Golagichi Committee, and anybody's welcome to join it, and what we do is, uh, we, actually, I learned a lot from, about the Golagichi, we talk about certain things, and then we work on different community projects and everything like that, my thing was working on was, uh, the Butler Island and Weepin' Times and stuff like that. And with Griffin Loxton being the manager of the Golagichi shop, ring shop and all.
And on the federal commission, ma'am.
And on the federal commission, he was able to bring information to us and everything.
And be on the-
And Ms. Moore, Ms. Moore being an descendant, she was able to bring stuff, and before it could not good, we just need more, more people to join up.
Now's the time really for that committee to, it's an important time, important opportunities, and now for that, I know Commissioner Loxton can speak a little more to that, but opportunities that are, can come that way, that really can be the local arm for, for some federal grants, who knows what can come down the pipeline on that.
Absolutely.
So we'll get that advertised, Ms. Moore.
Well, and also it gives the community another avenue of having some input of Butler Island.
That's right.
And all of the other, not only Butler Island, but all of the other, uh, disturbing things here in town.
Yes, because, uh, we already have a date set for next year, COVID would cause us to make different changes, but you make plans, sometimes you have to, you're just need to accommodate this.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, any more comments, any questions? Oh, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Next one is, uh, Mr. White Gill, special use permit.
Trying to figure out what the stipulations y'all are trying to work out on their own, and, uh, just let y'all know that I bring a considerable amount of tourists to the county, into, into the restaurants.
Okay.
And that's on the agenda, so.
Yes, uh, Sidney, you got anything on the license on that?
Well, yeah, uh, obviously, this is a, this matter's been going on for a while, um, and it, it's not, it's not an easy thing, not a quick or easy thing, but I think I can boil it down, uh-
Three minutes, sir.
Can't, I think I have to reiterate, all right. I think, I believe Archie Davis was interim city manager this again, I know I was serving as city attorney, uh, Councilman Skeen correctly pointed out to, to us that the zoning designation where Mr. Gill's, uh, trench truck is, does not allow outdoor activities, natural sales, and that's correct, and I printed that out and it's pretty clear, all uses, uses in the C two zone shall be conducted wholly within enclosed buildings except such uses as drive-in restaurants, gasoline stations, electrical transformer substations, and portocultural nurseries. So, uh, no doubt, and at the time, that was not, that was not when, that was his father, Darwin's, of course, back in two thousand sixteen, this again. So, uh, at the time, the only mechanism we had was a special use permit, and that was issued to his father, to Mr. Darwin. So moving forward, uh, we had to find some mechanism if we wanted to allow those activities, to allow those activities to happen, so what we did is to section eighteen eighty-three of the code was modified, and no secret where we got it from, it's got, it's GMA's model, that's where we got it from. And for those that are familiar, GMA's the Georgia Municipal Association, that's the association that provides cities with a lot of support, both technical, legal, drafting, uh, and policy, and they, they lobby on behalf of Georgia cities for legislation and related stuff. Uh, in addition to that, they're our insurance company, they're our retirement company, they're, they're, they're a big part of Georgia municipalities. So, we got that and passed that section, which delineated four different types of permits, there's a solicitor, and that's the old vacuum cleaner salesman, that goes house down, that's, you gotta get a background check, criminal, you know, uh, those type things for the solicitor. There's a peddler, and a peddler doesn't stay in any place of business more than thirty minutes, uh, which, that would not constitute what Mr. Gill is, then you have an itinerant merchant, that's what Mr. Gill calls it. And a itinerant merchant is someone who generally stays in the same place, which he does, he leases a spot, we know, on the corner there by the friendly, uh, and it's a itinerant merchant of this order that shall be deemed construed to be including person, a person, firm, corporation, any principal or agent, employer or employee who engages in temporary business in the city by selling or offering for sale goods, wares, merchandise, things for article value for a period of not more than hundred ninety days, and this is the issue we're on now, uh, this is where we come now. Quite frankly, you know, the city was not, after calculating days at this point, we weren't doing, uh, and, you know, I, I, I don't know if Mr. Gill would tell you how many days it's gonna be to issue, I don't think anybody could.
I haven't missed a day, oh, well, I've missed only three days, I'm sorry. Not three days.
Okay.
I'm there seven days a week, and I try to supply the, that nobody can get on Sundays. That's, that's one of my good selling points, because, uh, I'm not on any ones of, everybody else is close.
Okay. And then lastly, I guess, that special event permit is not to exceed three days, and that's like less than a week, or stuff like that, that's not, not germane to our special today. But, where we stand now is, you know, Mr. Gill was approaching the, uh, the hundred ninety days, if you just look at the calendar, he's approaching it. And, well, back up, I forgot to, there, there's a process where, um, the applicant comes in and receives his permit and sells goods, and he did that, and then pays his fees and receives permits and selling goods here in the city. So the issue now is the hundred ninety days. So, I was asked to-
I came, I came and got my permit, uh, the third of, uh, March twenty-second, I think, but daddy had died February third, and after all the Negro Romo Jumbo was taking place, and I changed the, the state license into mine, and everything, I was able to find out I had to get permits, I gave out here.
I don't think anybody's saying that, I just think you, I think you got that property, I don't think anybody raised that.
So then that's when I, when I, when I, like, every year I renew it at that time, in March, whatever it was, it's good for us, I thought it was good for a year, sales on the thing was good for a year.
No, see, it is, that's correct, that's what's confusing, it's good for a year, but within that year, you can only sell for a hundred ninety days, if that makes sense.
Yes.
Uh, I'm not saying you liked it or approved of it, it makes sense, so, uh, it is in fact valid for a year, so let's say if you did it for thirty days now, you know, it's not for six months, you have a hundred and sixty days left to finish the year out.
Yeah, that'll end that question. Well, I'm, I'm, please look for me.
So, what I was asked to do is to, uh, look at the ordinance and try to plug some of the holes and confusion, and I've done that, there's a, there's some redraft here, some of it's a little hard to read, and I didn't realize this when I printed it, because it's in red, you know, it's the, I tried to show you guys where it was, and it's hard to see on the black anyway. So I would have to reprint it in color, but yeah, you know, it's sort of difficult to read, uh, but essentially, we added provisions in, um, if the applicant would have, hold on. There is a requirement to- There we go, all right, that's, all right, so, there, there is a permit fee, first of all, you have to give your, uh, if, if you sell wares and services, you have to provide the Georgia Department of Revenue sales tax number, um, obviously, we wanna ensure everybody's paying their sales taxes, we have no reason to believe anybody's not. There's a provision that the, uh, and I think this is the crucial one, that these activities would not be conducted in the CHTHD district, which, where you are now is in that district, uh, that corner is in that overlay district. Uh, and then finally, to help us with this timeframe, each vendor would self-report the number of days they worked that month, so they would tell us, you know, I worked ten days this month, and here they are, and they would turn it to them and then self-report that to us, and every quarter, uh, to ensure everybody's good, would turn in their department revenue files for the sales taxes, and I think, you know, I think that the issue here, I, you know, I think that's probably doable for him, I think the issue here is the CHTHD requirement.
Okay.
And again, why that was added, you know, uh, is, and I was asked to look into that and add that to the provision, and look at the ordinance itself, which I did, and the stated purpose of that overlay district, that is to preserve the historic and local character, uh, so that would prohibit those activities there, and you know, CHT has several different layers to it, as you can see on that map over there, the CHTHD is the old downtown core part, and then you move a little bit past, uh, my eyes are a little bit bad, but let's say you get up closer to the fire department and police department, that is not HT, that's the historical transition district, CHTHD. That's right, that's right, from there, from there on down, so the Butler's IGA would not be in it, I believe, I believe that's an HT.
I know, I had to put it up here, okay. Okay, so we need to check into that?
Well, yeah, I mean, we're sort of combining the other agenda items, but you know, I, I know that's what you're talking about, so that might as well do it, you know, go ahead and discuss it at once. Because this is confusing, I mean, it is a confusing situation. But that's where we stand now, so I think that, you know, I think that Mr. Gill's approaching the hundred ninety days now on the existing license, and that, that's not changed, that, that's the ordinance as it stands now.
And there has been a question that asked, and, uh, the, uh, I remember help part, because I've checked you and inspected you and everything, too.
Act quarter comes, about that one, every three months.
Yep. Okay, so what, uh, what do you recommend, did we, give you time to look that over, or is something-
Yeah, that's on the agenda.
I know it's on the agenda, it's not, make-
Yeah, we're, obviously, we were close to that anyway, so.
Yes, sir.
No, I, I was just gonna clarify, when, um, city manager was talking about, uh, with Archie, what I went to Archie for was, we had salesmen knocking on doors here. I work in the cable industry, and when you go out and knock on these doors, um, no matter where you were at, Heinzville, Savannah, Richmond Hill, Jessup, Odom, Scranton, you have to come to City Hall, and you have to get a- Well, you have to do a background check, and then you, that, that's one of the requirements, we didn't have that here, um, we had a ice cream truck riding around with no license, we didn't know whether he was a pedophile or, I mean, really, we had no, we had nothing in place, and when we started looking, it came up with the merchants. And so, it was not directed at anything but to make the city safe, that's it.
I did misspeak on that, Mr. Skeen, I, I didn't intend to, but it sounded like you did it solely for the purpose, that's, that's incorrect, you did not do it solely for that purpose.
And that, and, and this was, this was the, the issue, because, you know, we've had issues in the past, we have our, uh, chief here, he can tell you, he was, he's been in Savannah, he knows, these people go knocking door to door, you don't know who they are, so you've got, you've got to have some accountability, and that's what I asked for, okay?
That's it. Okay, any more comments, questions? Comments, questions? All right, thank you, sir. Uh, next one is, uh, Professor A.J., A.J. Carter.
I don't see, that's Andy Carter.
Yeah, I didn't see him either, the quarter, uh, plan.
He probably comes after.
Okay, next one is, uh, I apologize for this one, for even start, Megan Disoriers and Griffin Loxton.
You speaking tonight or after?
Uh, tomorrow, actually, I would like to brief about tomorrow. Uh, well, I just asked briefly, that I haven't created for three minutes, so. On the, tomorrow, I asked the council if you would allow them, it's only gonna be like, uh, one person speaking, my job is to come up for ninety seconds flat, and then they would go, and it might be a few others, a lot of people, as the, uh, manager, uh, just said, uh, the timing is right, and I'm not saying it's for Flatter, I mean, from London, England, just got a call, two calls in the last week from New York City, they're talking CBS, NBC, not maybe, might, will be. Uh, so it's a lot of things are happening here, and because of the fiasco with the hospital ninety-six, it went, it went everywhere from that, so the group that's coming tomorrow is not gonna fire in Winston. We have a situation with Butler Island, that something must be done, uh, to my surprise, people from the Butler descendants, from the enslaved side, uh, they're very much interested, they wanna get involved, uh, about what are we gonna do with the Butler Island, uh, place there, so I told everybody that comes to me, day one, city doesn't have the funding, DNR doesn't have the funding, you're not gonna put it in there, city just don't have that budget, focus has to be on raising funds, and all the other things can come later, so I think you're gonna have a dose of that. It's a fantastic group, I think they got a hundred million dollar project with the East Coast Greenway, I promoted Darren every time, nationally or locally, we just did something for them, talking about Darren and Butler Island, I didn't even know it, they've got money to do something for Butler Island, with the, uh, Ms. Yunus, the ice cream, ice cream place, fantastic, she's on-
Y'all hearing my name?
Yes, uh, she's on some of the phone calls with the committee, which as soon as I leave here, we have a call tonight in preparation for tomorrow. Uh, in closing, Mr. Debbie Butler just called me, uh, Art Lucas, we were talking, and they know about what we need, and he's the owner of the Adam Strain building, uh, they contacted me, they're interested in, in, in helping out, so we got people local, and I think we can come up with something, but the bottom line, the city, and DNR has all the keys to all the locks, and I tell everybody that. You have to go through them, and anybody tell you, I run this council, that, that did not add, because I know you guys have the keys and all the locks, and it's my city also, so I'll close there, I will not talk that long tomorrow, ninety seconds flat, then one person will come up, and if you offer a lot, a little bit more in three minutes, I think that might be a good thing, thank you.
One thing on the-
You can't do a supportive thing.
He's gonna go over three minutes.
Not me, not me, I promise you ninety seconds, he didn't hit the bell, a minute, ninety seconds, that's all, we're only gonna be ninety seconds.
We didn't even start the clock tonight, did we, we said, look at there, we didn't give no deal, like, okay, we got five feet up here, somebody got me three minutes.
No, Ms. Megan is the key.
Only three people can speak on the same subject, I think, with any point written up in the court description. Be three minutes, three people for three minutes. Uh, one thing, one thing about the, uh, Butler Island is, I guess, a committee, the Butler Island committee set up to, uh, look it over, give us recommendations, tell us what can be done, but State Representative Butler, I got in touch, so it would've been asked me to pause everything until, I guess, she's in your group, could get with us and, uh, talk with us a little bit, so we put Butler Island on hold until, uh, State Representative Butler, and like I say, I think she's part of your group, uh, gets here and talks to us, and then we'll pick up, see what we need to go there, but right now, everything on Butler Island, other than cutting grass and trying to keep it cut out, uh, everything else is put on hold for right now, until, I guess, you know, we talk with tomorrow night, and then we'll get together and see what we need to do.
Well, we did have a long meeting with the distillery, I think we met, and, uh, I looked around like I had fun, my coach, you do a lot in the moonshine, so I'm in the conversation now, okay, not the distillery, but moonshine, so we had a nice conversation, and we drunk some water and whatnot.
But out of respect for State Representative, uh, she asked and to hold off on everything, so we got everything put on hold until we, uh, get with the group and find out and suit the recommendations, and then we'll go from there and see what we need to do.
And let me know who's on that committee, I know much you had asked me about serving, but I haven't heard you, so you can let me know something later.
I need to be involved, a part, you gonna call my name every time this happens, I need to be aware of, would y'all hear the call of my name?
Yes, ma'am. Any more, any more comments or questions?
I, I just wanna say, you know, Mr. Loxton has put in a lot of, a lot of time, and it, it, you know, as, as far as me, and, and I, I wanna say thank you, uh, and I know you've got a whole lot more to do, but for what you have done, thank you.
Yep.
Richie, I'll say this, you know, Richie works with my wife, and she, and I get involved too much, and she shocked me, she said, you need to get involved at that Butler plant, I had to look at her and make sure she was awake, because I get involved too much, and she don't care about all the crazy stuff I get involved in, so.
Well, you'd not like it.
Coming out of retirement for the Butler plantation.
Germany, Saudi Arabia, I mean, all over Asia, even all over the world, with the benefit of the chance.
Germany knows about, uh, Gary Beatle.
That's amazing.
Yep, and your wife, did I burp today, I wanna have, happy birthday to her, so. Uh, next on our list, Mr. Patty Gill, you wanna speak? Oh, okay. Well, I wanted to ask, I wanted to ask, was anybody else that wanna speak tonight? Next out on the beat, H two O website presentation, is Christian Holland, you wanna like us on that?
Absolutely, uh, we've got Lance and Victoria here from H two O, if they wanna come up. Exciting for us, if y'all remember the budget retreat, you built into this year's budget, uh, our website redesign, we had a capital project in progress for that, it's a good purpose, and frankly, you know, Michael Heisen was getting out to us, we all knew that, we gave enough time, he was moving on, I had done my independent research investigation, and all roads pointed to H two O, and then I guess the cherry on top of the sundae, when I spoke to Michael Ross, that's who he recommended, I think that was a good sign, my own independent investigation found it, and then he recommended it to me, so, uh, they put a proposal together, and I signed the proposal, I think it was an excellent price for what we get, I'll let them go to that with it, it, it met within our budgeted amount, we had the website redesigned, and what I really liked, and I'm sure they'll go through it, they've done other government sites, and they provide training for our employees on some things to do, like we were talking about earlier, some items that can come up, we'll be able to very quickly load this, for instance, the announcement you wanted, we'll be able to put it in the paper, as well as load it on our website very quickly and easily, and now it's a little bit more unwieldy for us to do that, like the Golagichi Commission, we'll be, our committee, we'll be able to upload that immediately for people who are seeking it, and, uh, as well as Kathleen, you can put it on her site, and we'll be able to cover it from a lot of different angles.
Well, I checked, I checked them out a little bit, and I hear that they got good legal teams, but, I heard that, I, I've heard all good, all good things about the company now.
Well, I will say this, I'm not, Richie and I talked about this earlier today, like, my best friend, how I got to the area, I've been best friends for twenty-five years, her husband is a, one of your team members, and he's a, he's a vet, and, um, so, I think Jeter and he bought the house from, from the vets, but yeah, so I, I think Robin do a great job, and I'm excited about it, what would you show me? I think that's kind of, what do you think?
Don't lie to you already.
I, uh, honestly, I had that for the best, it was, it was all seventeen hundred.
Yes, we talked about that, I mean, I had no, but that's not my job to do, that's not my job to consult with that, but-
You guys appropriated the money and I found the best one.
And I think, I think this is gonna be a great, a great team, I'm excited to work for y'all.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, again, uh, thank you to Mr. Braun for reaching out, um, Mr. Mayor and, um, council members, we're, we're excited to work on this project, uh, with all of you, together as a group, so again, my name is Mike Sabey, and this is the G W winner, um, I'm one of the partners of H two O, uh, we've been lucky enough to be a small business that made the crazy decision to open up in the middle of the previous recession in two thousand nine, uh, and we're still here to find the way, so, we have the, uh, wonderful building, in-store building in downtown Gronzok that we restored, uh, have a staff of eleven, and have really grown from three partners to again to eleven, and, uh, happy to be able to work with all types of businesses, uh, including municipalities and local governments, um, so, you know, we kind of specialize in not doing anything cookie cutter, really, our goal is to, to get familiar with all, we're obviously familiar with the city and, and what's happening here, and what's changing and moving, but also recognizing, you know, the history and, and the culture that's here in the community, so, as we talked to Mr. Braun, we really envision the website as, as a tool, right, it's, it's, uh, for lack of any word, it's your main marketing piece, that's how people are gonna find you, so, your current website unfortunately doesn't necessarily, well, in my opinion- that's how people are going to find you, so your current website unfortunately doesn't necessarily, well, in my opinion, speak to that, and so we're excited to help you kind of bring that to life, and share the community, and then also make it a a a tool that the city staff and possibly volunteers can use as a communication tool, and again, as a as a way to communicate to your citizens and also visitors to your community. So we're looking forward to that, and we're going to attack that in a couple of different ways. Um number one, uh we've included a proposal of some photography, so we have in-house photography and video um support, uh so Ben Gallon is one of our photographers, he's been um, you know, published all over uh southern the United States, uh had an exhibit, for example, in Atlanta Airport, uh has done a bunch of books, including a book on um Staple Island, um so that's number one, we're going to communicate on that website with some great visuals and video to share again with this community, and then again, making it user-friendly, mobile-friendly, so we're seeing eighty percent of traffic right now is easily on mobile devices, so it's really important that websites are friendly on your mobile phone, that people can get directions, can find restaurants, can, you know, look at events that you're hosting uh via the website, and to use that, again, is is an important tool. Uh also included, again, training uh on the website, so Mr. Braun and any other staff members that you want, we're happy to uh give them a couple hours of training. The other nice thing, uh we like to say with H two O is that we host all of our websites that we build, right now, we have about hundred and eighty-five websites that we currently host and maintain um on our own H two O servers, so your website's not living somewhere overseas, and if you have a tech support question, you could put the phone, you don't have to make sure you're calling Indian time, right, you're calling somewhere local, um and so we're here to to be able to help support any maintenance issues, and you know, that kind of stuff as well, so. Um I'd love to kind of open it up for for any questions or thoughts or feedback, things you, you know, like, hey, this plant just has to stay this way on the current website, we really like this functionality or feature, or maybe even hear about some municipalities or other organizations, maybe that you, or websites that you visited that you like, or you need to take a look at.
So now, we would be able to have the meetings recorded and maybe put on our website, so especially with this pandemic, this virus thing going on, looking at you, and the handicapped people, they would, they, you know, they can't make it to the meeting, now they would be able to, everyone see our meeting.
Yep, and they can be archived on there, so even if they're not watching them live, they can go back and and look at both meeting minutes as well as previous recorded meetings, most definitely.
I think that would be a great tool for us, that the chamber to use, um.
To link with us.
They'll link with us, the chamber and the.
There's a multitude, and I'm excited about this, with uh, for instance, you know, we get very into questions, and if people ask.